Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm Minneapolis City Council President. I'm joined this morning by my colleague, Councilmember Blong Yang. Before we begin our meeting, at times, we have the opportunity to recognize special individuals' efforts in our community and allow people to highlight the work they've been doing to make Minneapolis a better city. And so this morning, we have a resolution honoring Avenues for Homeless Youth who have worked on a major problem in our city. So I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Blong Yang, and we'll bring people up.
Ryan, you want to step up? So come on right up here. And when he's getting himself up here, I just want to let you all know that Ryan Berg is actually a renowned author. He just won Minnesota Book Award in 2016 for his book, No House to Call My Home: Love, Family, and Other Transgressions. And Ryan, when I finish reading this, I'll pass the mic over to you, and you can say a few words, okay? But Avenues for Homeless Youth is an organization that is across the Twin Cities, but they have a location in Ward 5, and really proud of the work that they do. So this is a resolution recognizing 40 to None Day. And I will start by reading it. Whereas up to 40% of approximately 1.6 million youth experiencing homelessness each year in the U.S. identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender, yet they make up only 5% to 7% of the general youth population. And whereas no youth deserves to be without a home because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas Minneapolis is committed to addressing the unique needs of LGBT youth at high risk of or currently experiencing homelessness in our community. And whereas everyone can make a difference as LGBT youth interact with more than just those working in homeless shelters. And whereas the True Colors Fund is working to prevent and end homelessness among LGBT youth, creating a world in which young people can be their true selves. And 40 to None Day is a national day focused on raising awareness about LGBT youth. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that we support the efforts to end homelessness among LGBT youth and acknowledge the work of Avenues for Homeless Youth to address the unique challenges facing LGBT youth enduring homelessness. Ryan, thank you.
Thanks, Blong. I appreciate that. We have 6,000 young people experiencing homelessness on any given night in the state of Minnesota. We have approximately 500 beds for those young people. Obviously, there's a great need. LGBT youth make up 40% of that. There are very few culturally specific programs available for young folks. The resolution really is meant to raise awareness and to evoke change in young people's lives. So I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for joining us this morning. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender is absent. Glidden.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
We have a quorum present. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And I have three motions, so I'm just going to read them. If people have objections, they can raise a flag here. We have a motion by Councilmember Quincy to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Resolutions a resolution recognizing Minneapolis Plumbers Local 15 for the Waters Off program. Councilmember Yang moves to amend the agenda to include the Order of Resolutions, a resolution recognizing 40 to None Day. And then Councilmember Glidden moves to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Business a resolution supporting local decision-making authority. So a motion to adopt those amendments would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. So a motion to adopt the agenda as amended is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. The next item we have is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 10, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. The reports to the standing committees are next, and the first to report is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. We have 18 items on our regular agenda for approval this morning and four items from the special committee that we had on Wednesday. I'll start with the regular items, which include a bond issuance for Plymouth Church with regard to, this is PCYC, and their programming there. Items 2, 3, and 4 are land sales. 5 is a business license suspension. 6 are the regular gambling and liquor licenses. 7 is a business license operating condition, as is 8, 9. 10 is a reissuance of bonds for a line of health systems. Donation travel acceptances are items 11 and 12. There's a contract amendment in 13, some changes in the Great Streets Program in item 14. Items 15 and 16 have to do with gimmick and changes to their loan program administrative fees. Item 17 is a rental license condition. And item 18 is the MOU with Hennepin County with regard to the Cedar Riverside Opportunity Center. So those are the items on the regular agenda. Maybe I'll move those first.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report, items 1 through 18. Any discussion on any of those items? Why don't you go ahead then, Councilmember Goodman?
Items 19, 20, 21, and 22 are the items that we took up in the joint meeting with the Public Safety and Civil Rights Committee. Item number 19 is the actual public assistance discrimination ordinance change. And items 20, 21, and 22 have to do with the landlord incentive fund, the changes to our unified housing policy, and some staff directions with regard to reporting back. So I will move items 19 through 22.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the items that are denoted as CDRS and PSCREM committee reports, so the joint committee. Anyone want to discuss any of those items? Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And thank you to my colleagues on the City Council, many of our partners, who are city staff members, and the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, and then a broad range of stakeholders that we have worked with, from community groups to individuals who have experience with the Housing Choice Voucher Program, to tenant advocacy groups, to individual landlords, and organizations that represent property owners and managers. I really want to thank the broad range of folks who have worked with us to help us do our best job on this package of changes. We've waited a long time to move forward this package, approximately two years since the time this ordinance was first introduced. And I have to say, I think that it was worth the wait to move forward all the things that are happening at this time, and this was the right thing to do. With these changes, and with the ordinance in particular, we are continuing what is a long tradition in the state of Minnesota and in the city of Minneapolis of protecting public assistance recipients from discrimination. And what this does is it ensures that Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher applicants or participants now will be given a fair shake and protected like others who receive public assistance from discriminatory acts in the marketplace. Now, we will no longer be permitted to have properties advertise, no Section 8 may apply, something that has long been a tremendous barrier to what is really a relatively small group of individuals who are some of our most vulnerable residents trying to find housing in the marketplace and having tremendous, tremendous difficulty. I think we've heard from statistics that there are only approximately 200 of the Housing Choice Voucher participants a month who are looking for housing and yet have such tremendous difficulties due to stereotyping and blanket rejection of Section 8 participants that happens prior to adoption of this ordinance. We also are seeing substantial changes in our commitment, both as a city and as Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, to review of the Section 8 program and commitment to updates and essentially moving the ball in an effort to ensure that the Section 8 program is serving everyone that it touches, tenants and landlords, in the best way possible. And I think what you're seeing with so many actions that the City Council is taking today is that our commitment is very strong. We are looking at several different types of actions, and we are going to keep our eyes as policymakers on this in partnership with staff who are working on the program itself. You know, when we had our committee meetings, I had a chance to say a lot of thank yous, but there's some groups I didn't get a good chance to say thank you to. And I wanted to say a special thank you to two individuals and then some other groups, but to Lael Robertson, longtime lawyer with the Legal Aid of Mid-Minnesota Legal Aid, now with the Housing Justice Center, and Eric Halgi with HomeLine. These are two people who have worked with hundreds, if not thousands, of individuals who have utilized Housing Choice vouchers and have seen firsthand from those experiences how difficult and how challenging it is for those individuals. And they have helped me understand the depth of this issue. It is in part why we have taken our time to work on this and not just adopt an ordinance, but take a deeper depth of work to make sure we're working on holistic program improvements in partnership with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. I also really want to thank the many individuals, some of whom came to testify at the public hearing, but many others who called my office, talked to me, talked to my staff about their personal stories. And again, how difficult it is to find housing in this marketplace. So thank you to all who have spent their time working on this. Thank you to ordinance co-authors, Councilmember Goodman, and Councilmember Worsami, who have put in a lot of time working on this as well. And again, just to reiterate my thanks to our staff in the city, which is exemplary, and also our partnership with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority and their commitment to work moving forward.
Any further discussion?
Seeing none, I just want to thank my colleagues also for the work on this ordinance.
As I said at the public hearing the other day, this is a challenge that I've been working on for many, many, many years. Actually, the over-concentration of Section 8 housing in my ward and part of, in North Minneapolis, has been a real challenge for myself as well as my constituents. And so I think that we have an opportunity to make changes in this program. I think this ordinance offers a stronger partnership with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority to change the dynamics that are involved in this program and offer more opportunity for people across the city in the choices that they have for housing. So I'm going to be supporting this today, and I thank my colleagues for working on this. Clerk, call the roll then on the Public Safety and, excuse me, the CD and RS agenda as well as the items from the joint meeting with Public Safety. CD and RS, PS, all these initials, PSCREM. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing five items forward for consideration today. The first is a resolution supporting Earth Hour 2017, which will occur on Saturday, March 25th, from 8:30 to 9:30 p.m. The second is authorizing three contracts for provision of services for victims of domestic violence, with Clues for $50,000, Domestic Abuse Project, or DAP for $50,000, and The Bridge for Youth for $50,000. Third item is authorizing two contracts for services for victims of sex trafficking and commercial sexual exploitation, one with the Family Partnership for $25,000 and one with the Link for $25,000. Fourth item is authorizing a five-year agreement with University of Minnesota Medical School's Pediatrics Fellowship Program to provide educational experiences for their residents and fellows in our school-based clinic program. And the last item is authorizing submittal of a grant application to the Merck Foundation for Diabetes Prevention Efforts. I will move all five items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have 12 items for us that we will ask for approval from. The first item is a reimbursement grant for a conference for the fire department. The second item is a contract amendment with the T-Wolves for bomb detection services at Target Center. Fourth item, an application for auto theft prevention grants. Fifth item is a contract with the U of M for bomb detection at TCF Stadium. Sixth item, contract with SMG for law enforcement services around US Bank Stadium. Seventh item is a contract with SMG for SWAT services around US Bank Stadium. Next item is a contract with Twins Ballpark LLC for bomb detection services at Target Field. Ninth item is a contract with the Downtown Improvement District for police officer assistance for the summer. Tenth item is a contract with SMG for bomb detection, 911 dispatch services at US Bank Stadium. Next item is a contract amendment with Hennepin Technical College for cadet recruitment training for this year coming up. And the last item is the 2017 Urban Scholars Program funding for partner organizations. And I will move all items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to pull any of those items off or discuss? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Taxes Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Worsami, but Councilmember Glidden will be giving the report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have just two items. The first is the passage of the resolution establishing the 2017 Minneapolis Board of Appeal and Equalization. And the second item is approving appointments to that board. I'll move both items.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Taxes Report. Anyone want to pull either of those items off? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 10 items for approval today. Item 1 is the 7th Street South, 13th Avenue South Street Reservicing Project. Item 2 is the 38th Street East Reservicing Project. Item 3 is the Contract Amendment with Minneapolis Refuge Incorporated. Item 4 is the Contract Amendment with Mark Fredericks for impound lot auctioneer services. Item 5 is a cooperative agreement with Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority. Item 6 is the 34th Avenue Street Reconstruction Project Layout Approval. Item 7 is the 2017 Open Street Dates. Item 8 is a bid for polyester resin and felt liner materials for cured and place lining. Item 9 is the bid for closed circuit television inspection of sanitary sewer system. And then the final is a low bid for North Town Bridge interpretive site, which will be the historical mitigation for that bridge project. I'll stand for questions and move all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That's it. The report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward 12 items for your consideration this morning. First is a legal settlement. Items number 2 and 3 are contract amendments. Item number 4 is a grant application with Preskey Foundation for Creative City Making Minneapolis. Item 5 is an agreement with Your Cause for Software. Item 6 is an agreement with Minneapolis Downtown Council. Item number 7 is the approval of appointments for members of the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee. Item number 8 is the refunding of a portion of the Target Center renovation project loan. And 9 refunds a portion of the Nicollet Mall reconstruction project loan. Item number 10, and 11, and 3 are all IT-related software and support services contract amendments. I'd like to move all 12 items for your approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye on all items except number 6. No on 6.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes in the report except for number 6, which have 10 ayes and 1 nay.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender. Councilmember Andrew Johnson is the vice chair, and he'll be giving the report.
Thank you, Madam President. We have four items we are bringing forward today. The first is denying an appeal of a condition of approval for a site plan review. Item number 2 is denying an appeal of the approval of a lot split. Item number 3 is granting an appeal on a demolition. Item number 4 is approving a rezoning. I will go ahead and move all four items along with the findings of fact for item number 3.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Palmasano.
I'm sorry, Madam President. He first moved all items except for item number 3?
No, he moved all items.
All items? Okay, I'd like to speak and say a couple of words on item number 3.
Okay. Councilmember Palmasano on item 3.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring forward to, and point out that there was a lot of discussion, actually, on both the lot split and this home, the Brenda Yuland home, in zoning and planning last week. And what, I've been very interested and present for a lot of these conversations, both in the community and here at council. I wanted to speak specifically to the Brenda Yuland house. I've become very fond of Brenda Yuland through this process. I think we all have learned something new about this incredible woman, something new about the legacy that she left. And I myself, as it turns out, live just three doors down from her property and passed her home probably 1,000 times in my goings back and forth and didn't know of her until more recently here. I want to point out that supporters of Brenda Yuland have brought up some really good points, both about her and about her legacy. And that's why I'm pleased to learn that the owners of this property were willing to set aside some money to honor her. I do think this can be done without preserving the house that she bought and lived in. Listening to testimony last week, I thought the most powerful case was made by the last person to speak, who was the person that once owned this house and bought it out of her estate. Beth Dolby talked about how she moved into this property as her own personal way to honor Brenda Yuland, knowing that the zoning and the land value of this home would help her to move out if she needed to at some point. She said that if historic preservation would have happened while she owned the house, it would have caused her financial ruin. I appreciate the sentiment of some who just want to study. Why not, they say? We could just do that. And at the end of the study, we can just see, well, the problem is, I think, that at the end of the study, the home remains substantially altered, and there remains no reasonable alternative. Those findings of fact are before you. I do think we've come to a win-win here. The mitigation plan put forward by Mr. Comers and Mr. Gross will help to preserve the legacy of Brenda Yuland in the public realm in a way that everybody can appreciate and learn from, while this property, one of the few that's zoned R4 in my area, can be developed into multifamily housing per its zoning, which is also greatly needed in my community. I encourage my colleagues to vote today to grant the appeal to the Heritage Preservation Commission, denying a demolition of historic, approving this demolition of historic resource application. It's before you. I want to make clear a point that was brought to my attention at the last minute, which is attaching that mitigation money to a building permit. In fact, a building permit is inclusive of demolition. So everything in the mitigation plan, the money that the developer is willing to put forward to a mitigation plan, will need to be done before a wrecking permit is issued. So I just wanted to make that clear. It was brought to my attention just here this morning. So the findings of fact and recommendation are before you, and I ask your support. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have 12 items for us that we will ask for approval from.